This, uh, last meeting of the 2002 North Little Rock City Council order and ask Ms. Whitby if she'd be as kind as to call Roe.
Present.
Yolding, Dobbins, Thomas, Berry, Vestal, Hite, Witcher, Aquomus present.
Thank you, could I ask that we stand for the prayer to be led by Alderman Berry followed by the pledge by Alderman Vestal?
Our dear heavenly father, as we are gathered out as Americans all throughout this world in the holiday season, may surely peace and mercy survive this, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God and in the temple with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Gibson moves and Alderman Witcher second, see, uh, minutes, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, uh, any discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
Yes.
Okay, Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Uh, and I assume we have a quorum?
Uh, that was the minute.
Oh, yeah, we do have a quorum, you've already done that, I'm sorry, uh, you're behind your head. Uh, yeah, I was trying to listen to too many things going on up here at the, uh, council chamber, uh, we're on communications, uh, uh, we have seven communications and, uh, and I'd like, uh, a blanket motion, is there a blanket motion?
Three.
Someone?
Motion made, seconded, anyone would like, uh, one fold?
Three.
Number three, I'd like number seven fold, uh, and, uh, and in doing this, uh, I'd like, well, I'd like number six pull two, that's three, seven, and six, on the blanket motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yolding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Number three?
Uh, now would you, uh, would you read number, just read number three by title and then let me, uh, explain it a bit?
This is a letter from Sheriff Randy Johnson dated December 17th and it's regarding the north side intake facility.
Uh, if you, if you look at it, uh, and then trying to summarize it very quickly, it, basically, uh, many of us read about a month ago where, uh, Pulaski County because of financial, uh, problems, uh, were cutting back significantly on their, uh, jail funding and as such would, uh, be required to close the north side booking facility, in fact, after I got bit into it, I found out that they were really planning on closing that the first part of December and, uh, and so I had a meeting, uh, called a meeting, uh, and asked the county judge, the sheriff, and, uh, and our chief, uh, or the principal attendees, uh, along with, obviously, well, Sheriff Justice Johnson chief and Judge Lyons and myself, uh, and, you know, expressed, uh, a really deep concern that, you know, the understanding that this community had when we entered into the, uh, jail agreement, uh, that, that north side booking facility would be a part of it and that, you know, that, uh, that the closure of that, we really didn't feel was a, uh, ought to be a part of, of a reduced funding plan and, uh, and, and the explanation was that, that that was just impossible to deal with the requirements of, of cutting their budget without doing that, uh, you know, I was unfortunately convinced that notwithstanding, you know, my concern, that that facility would indeed be closed unless some other arrangement could be made, uh, Chief Bradley is, uh, is on vacation but Captain O'Kelly is up here and I asked her to come to the microphone as I, as I briefly summarize what this letter is and, and as such, uh, you know, we, uh, tried to determine what the cost of keeping that facility open as it has been and, and it was about a quarter of a million dollars if I recall the total numbers and, you know, and I certainly didn't intend to, uh, nor could we afford supporting that kind of requirement, nor did I think it was, was, was anywhere fair, uh, and as such, the sheriff and the chief began discussing about an approach that may, you know, while it's not a hundred percent, uh, in terms of coverage, uh, in light of the, the really alarming concern that's growing with regard to the ability of our regional detention facility to continue to function as it was envisioned, not only because of the north side booking closure but because of repeated closures because of excessive numbers of, uh, of prisoners being there and essentially they shutting, uh, the facility down, uh, that, uh, you know, that, that those, those aren't going away, in fact, are becoming more serious, my concern obviously was, uh, the requirement of our officers having to go over to Roosevelt, uh, and, uh, and to utilize that facility over there, the time it would take them away from the streets, the, the diversion of, uh, of our resources from, you know, the principal job that we have and that is both deterring and fighting crime, uh, so the chief and, uh, and the sheriff, uh, came up with the approach that is summarized in this, uh, letter that the sheriff has sent us, uh, and while I still am strongly opposed to, to paying for this service, uh, the chief has, has recommended that in terms of the, uh, in terms of the general welfare of this community, uh, and in light of the fact that we are convinced that that facility would be closed, that this approach would perhaps be the best and I, uh, am reluctantly endorsing this, uh, in our budget that we're gonna act on tonight, uh, I set aside a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for, uh, to try to address such concerns as we may have with regard to the jailing operation of, of the detention facility, you know, while, you know, this sixty-seven thousand five hundred for six months obviously wouldn't cover that, uh, let me explain what this would do and, and, and the letter pretty much sets it out, it would on a, uh, on a, uh, a regular but, uh, but not full-time basis, uh, cause the opening of that detention facility for by and large one principal purpose, uh, and that is a book and release, uh, operation, which means that we would not have to go over with, uh, people who need to be incarcerated and that they would essentially be processed in and out of, uh, of that facility as it would be similar if we took them over to Roosevelt, now if I'm wrong Captain, you know, help point, help correct me please.
You're correct so far.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, and, and if for any reason, which is currently the, the approach now, that the jail was closed down, uh, where it was not receiving prisoners, then, you know, that, that regional, excuse me, that, uh, book-in facility would be used by all jurisdictions, uh, to, uh, house prison prisoners on a temporary basis but their requirements would be the same as they are now, in other words, they would have to leave personnel there to supervise their inmates so to speak, uh, while the regional jail was, was closed, which is the same thing that's happening now, uh, except it's being done in our, uh, in our closed facility, you know, that's attached to the police department, so there's no change in operation with that respect and, and, and the other part would be that in terms of the book and release, only North Little Rock, uh, officers would be, uh, would have access to that facility, now, we have made some initial contact with some other jurisdictions, uh, to perhaps try to share some of this cause, uh, this came about in, in such a, a, a timeless matter in terms of not having enough time, uh, that, that those, uh, contacts, at least at this point, have not, uh, caused us to enter, to be able to enter into any, uh, any, any agreements but we foresee that that's a, an equitable possibility, uh, and, and so what, you know, my essential recommendation was being, we, and as I understand from Captain O'Kelly and Chief Bradley, that we would more than likely need to act on this tonight, uh, because they are planning on closing that detention facility come January 1st if I'm-
January 3rd.
Well, January 3rd, uh, and, and as such, you know, we, we would, would more than likely need to act on this, so I'm gonna let Captain O'Kelly fill in any gaps and let the council ask any questions, you know, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a, an accept and file and when I ask for that, I'm, I'm also gonna ask someone to make a motion that we, uh, we, uh, allocate, uh, part of, uh, of that budget item, assuming again we adopt the budget tonight, you know, for this first six months and, uh, and it's, it's strongly anticipated that, that we won't expend all of that because of the possibility of other jurisdictions coming in, which they would be welcome, uh, and then they would be able to use the north side booking facility for a book and release while, uh, while, on this, under similar basis as to what we would, uh, with that Captain O'Kelly, you wanna fill in any of the blanks?
Basically what we've done is just kinda set up the framework, found out what the cost would be to keep this facility open for our use only for a six-month period of time because nobody knows what's gonna happen, uh, currently, and this, this is even on a reduced schedule because of the emergency closures, we're arresting incarcerating about 600 people a month, we've done an analysis of the arrest periods and determined between nine and one, so, or Monday through Thursday and ten to two in the morning on Friday and Saturday are our peak hours, so we've asked them to staff a person there, they have agreed to do it at our expense, um, there's a lot of logistics here that really aren't worked out because we are going to use that facility, which is a better facility than the old jail during the emergency closures and I, I would foresee in the future with the closures of the beds that we're gonna have that a lot more often, um, during the emergency closures, that operation reverts back to Pulaski County so it wouldn't be coming out of our pocket to house or staff their people and that, that's just a small area that we've gotta kinda figure out how we're gonna keep a check and balance on, we've had some contact with Sherwood and with Ma Mel, they're interested in using the facility, uh, we reached out to Little Rock and had some contact there but haven't really had enough time to further it, but I think that we're all gonna find that we have a need for some type of book and release and as it is right now, we're hardly incarcerating any misdemeanors, it's mostly felons and if we don't do this, I, I think we could anticipate close to probably ninety percent of our potential incarcerates being released and only the most serious felons being booked, but it's the turnaround time going to Little Rock that's gonna make a big difference here for us to have this.
Questions? So, so what is the, is the real reason that you wanna keep this open?
So we have a place to put people that we arrest.
Okay, I mean, what's the cause and effect, I mean, why, I mean, what's the real why? I mean, as far as, I mean, if, if we don't keep this facility open, we're gonna get, we're gonna go to Little Rock, right Roosevelt, right?
Well, what, what will happen a lot because if, if we don't have this facility and there's no intermediate place to house these people, that jail is gonna fill up and we're gonna go into the emergency closure and then you're gonna be citing people out and we already cite low-level felonies out and that's, you commit a crime, I write you a citation, say, appear in court and that's not a big deterrence and there's already a flow in the community about, hey, they can't do anything to us because they can't put us in jail, it, it's really crippled us on being able to take care of a lot of situations, now, um, I can make an arrest, I can transport them over to Little Rock, takes me forty-five minutes to get there, they're busy, it takes me an hour and a half to get them booked in, only to find out they're going into emergency closure and I've gotta cite them out, if you think about the man-hour cost for us in transporting people back and forth, it's gonna be huge and the fact that we do not have a place to put people that we arrest and these people are being turned out back on the street is kind of a scary thought.
And you said we're arresting approximately 600 a month?
Yeah, it's about 585 and that's even, I mean, we have scaled back so much because of the jail situation already with citing people out, I would speculate that that's probably a third short of what it used to be.
This is only gonna get worse in the future?
I wish I had a crystal ball, I, I don't see it improving anytime soon until other agencies decide to, to kinda get on board and help out, we've, we've gotta have a place to put somebody, for people that we arrest, so, I, I would not think it's gonna get any better until we take some action.
Thank you.
Mayor, I, you've already said this Mayor, I'll ask the question again, you know, we had a contract with the county and we agreed to give him so much money to run a booking facility for us and to take over the jailing facilities, so, are we gonna sign a new contract with them, uh, contrary to our previous agreement, uh, and, you know, and what's gonna keep them from sucking us all the way in to covering all this in the future, you know, I expressed this to you today, I guess one of my concerns is, you know, because we have, have been able to manage our money and stay on top of our situation, uh, while it may not be great, at least we, we've done that, uh, you know, and they have the same responsibility to the community and to the public that we do, uh, and, you know, and they made a commitment to us, you know, and I know, you know, what Captain Kelly, O'Kelly's saying, uh, you know, it's their responsibility in my opinion.
Oh, Alderman Witcher, I don't disagree with you that, you know, and as I said in, in my earlier comments that, uh, that, that I said as much to them, you know, during our meetings and, and, and the response that I got was, you know, you know, the money is just not there, uh, and, and while we may have the, the responsibility, we don't have the ability to, to fund the cost that would, uh, that would be able to shoulder that and so we're left with the choice of closing the booking facility, uh, and, and dealing with it, uh, by transporting to Roosevelt, uh, or, uh, you know, or approaching, uh, an avenue like we've been, uh, talking about and trying to recommend it, now what's to prevent them from sucking us dry, you know, us running out of money or this council putting a stop to it at some point in time or, you know, the mayor saying, I'm not even gonna bring it to the council or any council member saying that, so I don't, I don't disagree with you and if you choose not to do it, then we'll just see what happens and, uh, and I foresee the closure of that, uh, booking facility.
And I guess the only, you know, the only comment I would have is, you know, what's gonna prevent them from saying, said, well, you know, we still have the money to run the jail so we're just gonna turn it back over to you, uh, even though we have an agreement and that, that kinda concerns me.
Well, there is a legal responsibility, there is no responsibility on the cities to run jail, never was, you know, we, we took, we undertook as cities all across the state, undertook that responsibility because, you know, the counties, you know, for one reason or another, I mean, I can't go into speculate, but we never had a responsibility to jail our prisoners, you know, we undertook to do that because we felt it was a public safety issue, again, I, I mean, some other council members can go back a little bit deeper, we were, had been in the jailing business for as long as I know, uh, and, uh, and yet that mandate is not placed on us by the state, it's placed on the county, but in terms of holding those misdemeanors as well as, uh, as felons, you know, that became a part of our, our problem, as the state's problem has become part of the county's problem because we have roughly 200 I believe that have backed up from the state's perspective, so it's not entirely the county's, uh, ballywick, uh, they get backup from the state, you know, used to when we had our jail, we got a backup, uh, from the county, uh, we don't anymore because we're regional, it's, it's not, you know, it's not beyond what you say in terms of your concern, but it's, it's fairly uniform in terms of, uh, of, of, of how we choose to address it and we don't have to, I mean, there's no, nothing that mandates us to do this, uh, all I'm saying is that this is to me the best of, of some worst choices.
Okay, is the state, I'm, I'm sorry, one more question that I, I'll leave you alone, is the state paying for the prisoners at the county right now?
Not, not timely, as I understand it, not timely, if they would pay up for what they owe or, or, I don't know that paying is as much an issue as getting them up to the state, is moving them, uh, now, you know, I'm sure that there is, I've, I've, I've been told on occasions that the state is not as timely as being, as paying as they ought to, but the major issue is not so much concern in paying, you know, I'm just speculating, it's in, in terms of, of not moving their prisoners out after they've been convicted and sentenced, uh, up to one of the state institutions and, and the state's claiming it doesn't have room, I mean, that's what Brother Dobbins is gonna get a chance to go over and deal with there in a few days.
I do, it's gonna come back.
Yeah, we're gonna solve it.
Wayne Dobbins, all right, so Mayor, so what you're telling me is, I'm gonna paraphrase what you're saying, you know, the state is not in fact meeting its financial obligation and if they were doing that, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't be in a situation that we're in with the county, is that?
I can't say that's a hundred percent of the problem, but I can say it's a large part of the problem.
Okay.
Can, can, can I just add something?
Sure.
You know, Mr. Witcher, this is kind of a stopgap measure because we've never been faced with this and, and what we're asking for is six months, you know, we're not trying to make this a permanent arrangement, give us something so we're just not out there dangling on a limb right away where we can kinda lay about a plan and see what it is we need to do.
And the other part of it is, is, you know, you know, you know, the county judge went to the voters with a menu items and, and for one reason or another, it was pretty resounding defeat, you know, the jail tax, uh, was a portion of that menu and, and the real seat bet of the problem, you know, in my mind started when, you know, it was taken to the voters to approve the construction of the jail, but there was no, uh, uh, portion of that funding that addressed the operations of it and, and as such, it's being operated somewhere to our transit system which every year, you know, we come back and, and we go through this, you know, this battle in terms of, uh, of coming to the respective jurisdictions and we're here again and, and until we find some permanent funding mechanism, uh, you know, and, and/or the jail finds some magic bullet, uh, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to be dealing with this and it's gonna get worse instead of better, you know, I can tell you that, Alderman Dobbins and Alderman Gibson.
My question is, a hundred thousand dollars, first, where is this money coming from and in a lot, large part I do a group of it all, you know, as it is, state is causing the problem by not moving prisoners, county has fiscal responsibility also and, and then we have certain agreements that not alleviated but allow the door yard imprisonment of those prisoners in county facility, now, as far as our budgetary items, it's very definite here and that's our responsibility, my question is, a hundred thousand dollars, where would it, where would it come from?
It'll come out of the police budget, are you gonna take us?
No.
Reduce the number of police officers are not, not giving up the program.
It's a separate, it's a separate line item, you know, that is every budget that was, you know, I put there in anticipation of some problems developing knowing, uh, I didn't know that this particular, uh, item was gonna be a result of it, I didn't, you know, I didn't have any real idea other than I knew based on what the county was saying that, that we, that it would be wise to try to set aside some funds that this council would have an ability to deal with if, uh, if, if, if that priority seemed to be resolved by that allocation, so, you know, it just was part of our budget process and my recommendation to this council. Alderman Gibson?
Mayor, I, I guess I have a couple of concerns and, and number one, we've got to do this, I mean, I, I don't disagree that we're gonna have to do this, I am concerned it is basically a trout farm, it's a catch and release and that's all we're gonna do, we're gonna pick them up and we're gonna take them to North Little Rock and they're gonna be back on North Little Rock streets or we can pick them up and take them to Little Rock and they're gonna be back on North Little Rock streets, I mean-
By and large, I think you're right.
Kind of like, it, it kinda delays the release back and, and as there is room in the detention center, they will be transported over there, but basically-
I understand, but the problem i- is that something that we're gonna have to work on with various legislatures and a lot of other people, the county's problem is that they have the beds over there, it's not a bed problem, they don't have the money to hire the people to run the beds and, and when they, they, they cut, they shut down another section of the jail, let something like thirty-five employees go, and, and where's the problem, it's two problem, number one, what the state pays them, what the pay, the state agrees to pay them, won't pay for the cost of housing the state prisoners and they don't pay them, they owe, they owe eight hundred thousand dollars or nine hundred thousand dollars now to the county, if the county had that eight or nine hundred thousand dollars, they could open those beds back up, open up this detention center and we'd be back in business, but nobody's been able to put enough pressure on the governor's office and the legislator, legislature to say, this is a priority and we've gotta do this and, and I don't know the answer to it, we can do a stopgap answer, but if the legislature doesn't do something about it and then in this sixty to a hundred and twenty day session they have coming up, we'll be talking about this in June, but more seriously, we'll be talking about it in two double oh four, five, six, and seven.
Well, the serious problem, and we all know that Alderman Dobbins is gonna go over and clean this thing up real quick, but, but the more serious problem are, are, you know, we're, we're experiencing, you know, a, a, either a, a leveling out and/or a rising in our crime rate and a lot of that is because, you know, people who do, who do less serious offenses are, are like we say, or like you say, are coming in and coming back out because we, there's no room in the end, so, you know, at, at some point, we'll find a, an answer but it's not on the immediate horizon and this is just a stopgap, Alderman Gibson.
One thing, I just wanted to know that when we do this, we take, uh, seven thousand people roughly over there a year, we arrest seven thousand people.
Have you got the stats in front of you?
Well, you gave me five hundred and something a month, so that's seven thousand, that's seven thousand people we arrest, we'll be paying seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for jail expenses.
Well, the only thing I need to point out, and Mr. Sisson, you can help correct me, is before we closed our jail, our annual operating, you know, somewhere in close to nine hundred thousand if I'm not mistaken.
But we were, we were in the same situation the county, most of the, many of those prisoners that we were holding in our jail weren't our prisoners, they were the county's prisoners, but the county couldn't take them because, and the state wasn't paying us either.
What, what I was just trying to point out is that the regional detention approach, you know, and that this city agreed to do, you know, was the right one at the time, I think it's still the right one, uh, we had somewhere, when we did this, somewhere between four and five hundred bed spaces, uh, with the county, you know, it was close to a thousand, so we more than doubled the bed spaces when we went to the regional approach, of course that was ten years ago or thereabout and those, it didn't take them two years before those bed spaces were full, uh, so, you know, the problem is, you know, is the expanding number of people that we need to find places for as well as the cost associated with it as well as, you know, the county having its problems as well as the state having its problem, I mean, it's one of those that, you know, that you can point a lot of fingers and, and we need to find some answers because it's, it's, it's gonna affect the safety of our community, it's just that simple, Alderman Dobbins?
Well, let's, let's talk about that for a moment, I mean, brothers, I'm here and put some more money to it, but I hadn't heard something more creative than saying, catch and release, basically, you catch someone, miss a crime, got it, whether you're booked in North Little Rock or booked over on Roosevelt, you're outed, whatever the processing time you have to make it, an outing, so you hadn't, had deterred anything, you're talking about a hundred thousand dollars, I'm, how much would a police officer in our jail are making an hour, what do they make?
I imagine that their salaries are in the low twenties, probably eighteen, twenty-four.
So that's, so that's about nine seventy-five, nine fifty an hour and you got a hundred thousand dollars, it almost seems to be, just thinking out of the box, you just take the hundred thousand dollars, say, look, all off duty, I'll come to jail over there and empty space up and we got, we got room for you, I mean, if, if, if the point is to get the criminals off the street, that's the way to doing it, but right now, all I'm hearing is, take some money, process them, let them go, take some money, process them, let them go, I mean, that's, that doesn't do the point of what at least what I call law enforcement, law enforcement officers are putting their lives on the line, uh, every day, they're not, they're gonna get frustrated more and more to see that same person committing that same crime, hey, this guy knows that, hey, hold me, you know, well, you know, you hold me for two hours and I'm gonna go back out there and call some problem over there and, you know, and I'm back at it again, I'm thinking, I, I think we need to, maybe we need to put a little more thought into this, maybe hold this for a week, you can always call an emergency meeting on this, it isn't about a bit critical important, I think we need, we need to talk about that, I don't know what about the legalities of it, of having North Little Rock police officers all of a sudden become county jailers for a little bit?
That's not what we're saying.
No, no.
We're just saying we're gonna, see, one of the things Alderman Dobbins-
What I'm thinking, what I'm saying, let's try, talk about doing that, let's talk about doing that for, not in a, not in a performance like takeaway from the job, but they perform other off-duty tasks, they go out to the-
Let me, let me just interrupt you just a second, now, one of the biggest things, even though we did reduce some of our annual expenditures, but one of the biggest things that we feel good about what, the way the regional concept is, is because if you wanted to talk to Mr. Sisson and our former city attorney about liability issues, you know, we were running into lawsuits, uh, right and left, uh, and, and prisoner lawsuits seem to be a, a thing of some degree of repetitiveness and the last thing we wanna do is get back in line of that, of that cannon.
Well, Mayor, I don't wanna disagree with you, but I don't wanna bring a tort reform on that, you know, you're being a lawyer either.
Hey, I may be one of the biggest supporters of tort reform, that's been a lawyer now.
But, but my point is this, if we don't change the structure of it, you're gonna be just doing the same thing, Captain O'Kelly.
Well, I think that's, I'm-
I think we need to explore that for a little bit.
That's what we're trying to do by buying this period of time. That's what we're trying to do by buying this period of time. If we don't make a commitment to Plaskett County, they're gonna close that center and then the ability to reopen it is pretty well eliminated. And, and if we can do it now, the six-month period of time gives us an opportunity to really try to think outside the box and come up with some novel solutions. We just don't have, it's hard to do between now and January third.
I understand it in times of the essence, but I think that if we don't come up with something better than, uh, hold and release, I think we need something better now, I think our citizens deserve better than that. Uh, I think that, for me, it doesn't, so, so simple that, hey, you got off-duty police officers, they're certified by the state, why can't they go spend four hours getting paid as jobs? I don't see the issue in that.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna answer that to a degree. Uh, I'm not sure that the off-duty police officers, first, number one, I'm not, do you have any idea what they make off-duty?
No, I think, I, I think they make less than a hundred thousand dollars, I think we can figure out a way to compensate them for that.
Well, it, the average jailer cost, and, and they do make twenty and change, but the package, the time they put health insurance and everything else is around thirty-five thousand dollars per employee.
So you're talking about sixteen dollars an hour, seventeen dollars?
Well, but, but, but you don't get that, I mean, but when you get into it, that's what, that's what they make.
And I'm throwing, I'm throwing this out.
Okay, so, but you, you gotta have this booking office open a period of time and, and you can't work people seven days a week, you have to work them on a, on a period of time. The, the numbers they've given us for the, what, sixty-seven, I don't have that piece of paper with me.
Sixty-seven, five?
Sixty-seven, five, for six months' operation of that facility is probably the bare bones cost of us operating it, but if, but I, under no circumstances want to send on-duty or off-duty police officers over to that, that booking facility and us run it. Uh, the liability factor, Joe, you, you go arrest and I, I will, John Doe, you go arrest John Doe, uh, on public drunkenness and when he gets in there, he starts having heart problems. So you send him to Memorial Hospital or send him to Baptist Memorial Hospital. Let me tell you, who pays for that? The taxpayers pay for us. So, I mean, and it becomes a real problem. I don't want us running that facility. If Randy and him can find a way to use his deputies who are used to running jails and it takes a completely different set of skills to run a jail than it does to be a police officer out on the street, the police officer on the street takes a much higher skill than that.
I agree with you, that's why I said they have higher skills than they do, but yes, it's important too, is the liability of the, that Joe person who had that heart attack or whatever, what about that citizen whom Joe attacked walking down the street and he's released and back on the hating in two or three hours? There's, there's that lady, you know, who just got attacked, or there's that house that's been broken in, that family terrorized, that person's right back on the street again. We're not, we're not resolving anything.
Well, let me, let me tell you what we are resolving, Alderman, uh, and, and I agree with you, we're not resolving that issue, but we are resolving is that instead of having a police officer taking three hours to go over to Roosevelt, he's gonna take an hour to go down to our booking facility and he's gonna be out there where he can make sure that maybe that person won't commit that crime, or he can catch another one, you know, that does a more serious crime. That means they're gonna find some bad places, some places for the bad people, they're not gonna let them back out on the street, but that bad people level continues to get higher, you know, as there are more of those folks that try to find those fewer beds. So I don't disagree with anything you say, what I'm saying is, this is not a solution, this is a stopgap. Uh, the solution is opening more bed space and that's gonna take more money. It's just that, a lot more money.
I'm gonna throw mine in 'cause it's my last one.
Mayor, one, Mayor, one, Alderman, Yilding?
Uh, yeah, your, your situation that you're talking about is not gonna be solved by this, like the mayor said. They're still gonna be out there, they're still gonna be doing something else because there's no place in the jail for them. Like you said, all this does is make it so the police officer can go and, and actually arrest somebody and do the paperwork and they can get bonded out and then they're, you're right, they're gonna be on the street, 'cause if they don't, they're gonna get sighted out, which is like a ticket, okay? So, I mean, that, that's all this is doing, it's a much, much bigger problem. Now, while I'm, kinda like Martin, I mean, I'm for this, but, you know, as Alderman Witcher's saying, we're getting caught on this deal because the county should be taking care of this. And here we are, we're gonna take our money and we're gonna go open this up, but we're doing it for ourselves, now look at it that way. We're doing it for ourselves and our people because our officers aren't gonna have to go over there, forty-five minute round trip and then maybe sit there with them if the jails close and that sort of thing. Now, I have a question for Captain, uh, how many people can we hold down there at one time?
Over in the Northside Center? You know, I'll honestly say, I'm not really sure how many are over there, but I would speculate probably thirty or more bed spaces, but, you know, kind of in response to that, one thing that we need to consider here too is, if we don't do this, the emergency closures are gonna be more and we're using the old jail. Now, you've talked about medical costs, when we are holding our own prisoners down there, they are not booked in under Plaskett County, they're ours, so any transportation, any hospital cost comes back to us, but if they're transported to that Northside Center, they fall under Plaskett County and they get the cost of that. And let's think about another aspect, the Northside Center is equipped to deal with this, they can segregate females, males, misdemeanors, juveniles, they're equipped to handle it, they've got all the other, the fingerprinting equipment, the photograph equipment. If we start going back to our old booking center, what we've been doing is each department had one cell. Now, we're gonna have more emergency closures and you're gonna have more mixture of people down there and we're gonna get exposed to some liability.
My next question, you said during jail closings that the county would take over?
Yes.
All right, explain that.
Well, we haven't really kind of worked out the fine details of that, but the facility would be open at our expense for us to book, to book. When it goes into an emergency closure, when they can't take any more prisoners, it's shut down. Instead of using our old jail as a temporary emergency hold, we will use the Northside Center as a temporary hold. Now, during that time, that's Plaskett County's expense. So, we're going to have to...
As I understand that, help me out Captain, as I understand that, the, the staffing will be similar to the way the staffing is now and that is that even though if that closure occurs, Malmell, Sherwood, you know, state police...
Yeah, anybody can...
Little Rock...
Right.
Can bring prisoners over and, and that, yet their responsibility is to maintain an officer to supervise them.
That's correct.
Now, the county will still during these hours have people there.
That's correct.
Okay.
But they won't be at our expense during the emergency closure.
That's correct.
Right.
It'd be just like it's operated now during an emergency closure.
So, I mean, those are kind of the fine detail, it's confusing, those are some of the fine details that we've gotta work out, how we're gonna account for this, but, I mean, it, it's a start to finding a solution that's gotta happen.
Captain, I think you bought six months for me, whether it's a hundred thousand dollars, you have some assurance that we're gonna look at that...
Oh, yeah.
Not just think about other things, I, just 'cause I said it, don't make it a great idea, but I think it is an idea that a criminal will just laugh at your face if they know you can't hold them for an hour, I know those police officers get frustrated out there and I would hate to see someone let their emotions take over and, but that's a safety issue also. I think that we need to just look at it from the standpoint of changing up the way we're doing things, because it's, it's broke, it's not, we can blame county, blame the state, but now we're talking about our citizens and our money. We're, we're taking away from our citizens to do something like this and I think that we need to really come up with a solution that will workable and not let somebody do a crime and an hour later, they're back out there doing the same thing.
I just, I just want to tell you, Alderman, when you're making that speech in the well of the house, I'll be a fair plug. Alderman, uh, Witcher and then Alderman Height.
Mayor, I guess my last question, Captain O'Kelly, turn another light bulb on, okay, that also means the state police would not be able to use this booking facility also, is that right?
Not except for closures.
Not except for closures. The state police would not be able to use it, only North Little Rock.
The only time, the only people that can book in there is us, when we're paying for it, until it goes into an emergency closure and then it reverts back to Plaskett County, any agency that brings a prisoner in has to assign one officer to remain with them.
But now, what we're gonna do, what we're gonna try to do is, 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 is recognize that, you know, that in terms of, of cost, that if someone else wants to come in and be a financial partner, you know, then, then, then we will certainly hold that option open and, and that opportunity available. Uh, but, you know, at this point, until we work some of those understandings, uh, it would just be available for those that pay and right now, we're the first one stepping forward on, on this approach. Now, I don't imagine, you know, that you're gonna have too many folks from the south side of the river, what you're looking at is Jacksonville, Malmell, Sherwood, uh, those communities have, have expressed some interest and I think those are the ones that we're talking to.
Somebody should contact the state police and see if they wanna contribute too.
And that, uh, Alderman Height, did you have...
Yeah, well, I've, I've got a new question, but I, my old question is, how long does it take, if we were to drive to Roosevelt Road, how long would that process take? What, what, you've mentioned three hours a few minutes ago, how long does it take?
It depends on what the arrest is for, what the traffic's like and what the situation is in the jail and, and I imagine you could have a turnaround time of maybe an hour and a half and it could be much longer depending on what they're charged with.
So an hour and a half at the, at the least and possibly double that. Okay, I was doing some math here earlier and correct me if I'm wrong, but I was using the low end of the pay scale figuring they were, that the police officers were making about ten dollars an hour and if we were arresting about twenty a day, you said six hundred a month, thirty into six hundred and twenty, how many trips are we gonna be making across that river? At ten dollars an hour, I'm figuring it's gonna cost us twelve thousand a month if we start making trips across that river. And it's all about money and I figured twelve thousand a month times six is seventy-two thousand, we'd get a better buy if we, if we funded ourself and hadn't come to North Little Rock.
If we get into a peak season where you're making a lot of arrests and you may have twelve to fifteen officers deployed in the field, people tied up on calls and then three or four officers trying to book prisoners, I mean, we could, we could get into some safety issues.
Uh, what, what, my, my other question, all right, the emergency closures, how frequently does that happen?
They have been frequent and because they're closing a hundred and sixty beds, I, I would expect them to pick up. I think January, February, we're not gonna see a whole lot of change, but when spring rolls around, people start getting active, we're gonna see more and more closures. I think, well, you hate to speculate, but I, I would imagine probably thirty, forty percent of the time.
So when that occurs in the county, the financial liability falls back on the county when that occurs? Thank you.
Let me ask for a motion to accept and file and, uh, and, uh, and essentially approve this for a six-month period, that's what I'd like the motion to be.
Go move.
Is there a second discussion?
I just wanna tell Mr. Height something, when you get a chance, go look at the payroll schedule of the, uh, police department, you'll find that nobody makes ten dollars an hour.
No, you, did you hear me, I was using the low end of the possible pay scale. It's not even the low end, I've got to be, several officers out here now.
That's not even, uh, that's not even the lowest low end.
Well, then you, then my numbers are really skewed then, okay.
On the, uh, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Uh, let's see, what's the next one, uh, is it six?
Six.
Uh, just read that by title.
This is a letter from Judge Mackey-Pierce dated December nineteenth to, uh, City Attorney Mr. Susskey and some other attorneys regarding City of North Little Rock versus Development and Construction Management Incorporated and a judgment.
Uh, and one of the things, and I wanna compliment our city attorney, uh, on, we, uh, if you well might remember that we, we, uh, this council authorized and we recommended and entered into a, uh, a, an understanding, uh, that, uh, was not fulfilled with David Carl with regard to development of, uh, our eleven acres, uh, east of, excuse me, west of the Broadway Bridge and, uh, and, and Mr. Carl, in our opinion, didn't fulfill, uh, some of the requirements and, and the contract was never consummated. Uh, the city attorney's office has been representing us, actually, they had to recuse because of a conflict and, uh, and, you know, we had, uh, outside counsel represent us, so we had a hearing on a motion for summary judgment and, uh, we just received a response and I wanted the council to become aware of it, pending of any appeal, uh, the trial court ruled in our favor and, and that, that property is now free and clear and, and back in the hands of the city council. Mr. Susskey, you want any comment?
Uh, yes, so at this point, pending an appeal, it's our property to choose to do as we wish.
What attorney we use?
Excuse me?
What outside attorney?
Who did we use?
Uh, John Baker at the Mitchell firm.
Uh, all right, uh, do I have a motion to accept and file?
Go move.
Second move. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yilding?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Uh, would you just, uh, read number seven with the, uh, transmit letter of mine, or from the city attorney rather, who did it on my behalf?
Yes, sir, this is the letter dated December twenty-third, members of the North Little Rock City Council, regarding resolutions for a voice vote. Dear members of the city council, Mayor Hayes asks that I draft the enclosed resolutions in order for you to consider these items for a voice vote during the communications section of tonight's city council meeting. If you have any questions or need further information, please let me know.
Uh, let me just refer to the, uh, the, uh, the second one first, uh, the, the second one, uh, you all, you will recall, uh, that we as a council passed a revision of our, uh, privilege tax, uh, fees at the last council meeting. Because of a variety of reasons, uh, uh, the, uh, communication was not as timely as perhaps it should have been, uh, the, uh, the, uh, review by some of the business community, particularly those represented by the Chamber of Commerce, uh, was, uh, was, was not, did not have the opportunity, uh, to fully review that, although I know that we didn't have very much communication and, and because of the desire to have this, uh, in place because bills go out during the first of the year, you know, we, uh, we passed that legislation. Uh, I've had a chance to visit with several members of the chamber, a representative group came and, and talked to me last Friday, uh, after discussing, you know, their concerns, principally which had to deal with, uh, the opportunity to review and, uh, and have input into this process. I could not disagree that, that that happened, uh, and for, as I mentioned a little earlier, a variety of reasons. Uh, I, uh, indicated to the chamber that, that while I did agree that the, the, that the process, uh, perhaps could have given them more of an opportunity for input, that I did think that the results were fair in, in light of what we passed, uh, but yet that fairness, uh, needs to always be tempered by, uh, having the opportunity for those who are interested to comment. Uh, so with that recognition, uh, I indicated that I would support, uh, an amendment that comes up a little bit later in the council's agenda and that that amendment would essentially, uh, bring back or, and I'll let the city attorney explain it, the direction I asked the city attorney to, to go in was that, you know, I wanted to make sure that, uh, we had the opportunity as a council to allow, uh, public input, uh, with principally a group from the chamber, but certainly anybody else that might wanna com- comment, uh, that I would work with them over the next thirty days, uh, and, uh, and try to see if there was both an understanding and perhaps even a consensus that could develop, uh, and that I would bring legislation back, uh, no later than the first council meeting in, uh, in February and that that legislation I would, uh, hopefully have the support of the chamber, but, but certainly recognize that we needed to go forward with that in terms of addressing not only the, the revenue that that would produce, but also the equities of, uh, of the, uh, those that pay privilege taxes to, uh, to be a part of, uh, of assisting, uh, in the services with their revenue that the city provides. Uh, that resolution essentially chronicles what I just said, uh, that the, that the chamber indicated to me that they would be active in the process, that they would, uh, work toward a, trying to have a quick resolution of, of this, uh, and that, uh, that, you know, we would make every effort to try to come up with a consensus, but if that wasn't possible, then, then I would go forward in that March, or not March, that February meeting, uh, with, with, uh, what, you know, what we think, or at least what I felt would be fair in light of the circumstances. Uh, so this resolution essentially, uh, states that in, in much more succinct terms and, and I would appreciate by voice vote, the council, uh, accepting this and, and acknowledging that, uh, that, you know, that we'll have an opportunity for this kind of input and, uh, and that what could be a, a problem that is caused by, uh, uh, a lack of opportunity to communicate would be at least resolved by that communication and, uh, and hopefully a consensus could be achieved. Uh, the other instruction that I, uh, asked the city attorney to do, and he can explain that a little bit more both now and, and maybe we could deal with that, that amendment at this time since we're all on this topic, uh, would be, uh, that, you know, that, that little bit more both now, and maybe we could deal with that amendment at this time since we're all on this topic, would be that, you know, that that fee that would be set the first of February would cover the entire year, and that there would be no legal concerns with regard to the fact that we have not charged a fee, or would not charge a fee, or would withhold charging any fee under the old schedule, so that whatever this council set the first meeting of February would be what the fee would be for the year, and I'll let the city attorney comment on that. That's also, you know, an expression that we conveyed and discussed at that meeting, and I think there was a consensus that this fee that we set after input would cover the privilege licenses for the calendar year '03. Mr. Suskey?
Yes, Mayor, what I did is, what I have in front of you, I've passed out ordinance in the top right-hand corner, it says amendment to O-02102. What I did is replace Section 1, that it simply states that the cost of the privilege license for 2003 shall be established by the city council at the first meeting in February. Until the city council sets the 2003 cost for privilege licenses, no privilege license shall be issued by the city. So essentially what it does is, they have not set the cost of privilege license at your first meeting in February. Y'all could choose to do so. A couple aldermen brought to my attention, they were concerned as well, can you do this after the year starts? In my research, there's no requirement, and absolutely, we're saying if you want to conduct business by this city for the year, that in February, we're going to tell you what that cost is, and I don't see any legal repercussions for waiting.
Alderman Thomas?
So, no one that wants to pay their privilege tax can pay them in January?
That's correct. If this is adopted.
And what I, I'm sorry, what I've discussed with Mr. Sussin after I met with the chamber, or the representative group from the chamber, was that we would get letters out to those businesses that are currently on our rolls, and indicate to them in a fairly summary letter that, you know, that this process is, that privilege taxes are being revised, and that pending a revision of the council that we anticipate will happen in February, that bills will not be forthcoming, but that we will not accept during this interim any payment on any privilege tax license until the council acts. Any questions?
So, you're really not rescinding what we did last time?
Well, yes, we are. You know, we're essentially rescinding what we did last time and saying that there's nothing on the table now until this council acts in February. So, the answer to that is yes, we are rescinding.
Mayor, are we considering then the resolution? Are we considering?
Well, right now, what I'd like to do is just take it in order, and the order is, is the voice vote on the resolution that was attached to the correspondence.
Both resolutions?
Uh, no, just one, just the one having to do with the privilege tax.
Well, if we're going to do number two, I don't know.
Well, now, we're going to do, this may get a little bit confusing, but what we're going to do is, and I want to bring this up second, so we can, so we can make sure we understand what's in front of us. You know, Alderman, uh, City Attorney Suskey, you know, has passed out what would be the operative effect. This simply acknowledges the procedure we're going through, and that indicates that we're going to try to set the, uh, act on the legislation that would set the fees the first meeting in February. That's what the resolution that is attached to the correspondence does. The second would be the amendment to an item that has been filed later for actual consideration by the council, that subject to the council wanting to do it, my suggestion is act on it right now. Are you with me? Is everybody with me?
Nope.
Pardon?
I'm not sure I am.
Okay.
Please, 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 let me just let me.
The first thing, let's just take one thing at a time. What I'm asking is, what is before us is the communication. The communication which is attached to resolutions, the one that I'm asking us to consider by a voice vote, indicates that, basically that we will act on the privilege tax legislation, or make every effort to act on the privilege tax legislation the first meeting in February, no, later than the first meeting in February.
And so, is this legal then to do this before we repeal what we did last time?
Well, it gives a sense of what we're going to do, yes, that's.
Well, let's get in order. First thing we need to do is call O-2102. That's the first, if that's what we want to do. Because we need to call it amend in this legislation in its place.
You want to do it that way?
Is that not correct?
Either way.
I mean, this is, this piece of legislation is not on our agenda.
That's why you want to do it, we'll do it that way. Miss, uh, without objection, Ms. Whitby, would you call, uh, O, what, O-2102?
Yes, sir.
What is it?
O-2102.
Why don't you call O-2102?
Yes, sir.
This is an ordinance, amended ordinance number 7502, also known as the occupation privilege tax ordinance, and amend a certain section of chapter 98 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code for speeding.
All right, now, do you have a motion?
Your first, okay, normally you won't let us make a motion until someone's done something else, but now we're going to be able to do that.
Well, now, help me out, I'm.
Normally you make a suspend rule someplace on the second reading before we can say anything.
I do?
Yes.
I'll do that.
Second.
Or the motion to suspend the rule?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Okay, now I have a question.
All right.
Section 1, read it entirely, that the cost of privilege license in 2003 shall be established at city council at the first meeting in February. Until the city council sets a 2003 cost of privilege license, no privilege license shall be issued by the city. What if we don't set one by the first meeting in February? At the first meeting, because you're assuming at the first meeting in February that we can get the rule suspended and done. That's number one. Number two, what if we don't get one done at that meeting, or the next one, or the next one, because we can't agree? Because from, from my conversation on Friday, I thought the only difference was the difference when going from 75 to 125 was going from 75 to a dollar. Now, since then, I've been told something totally different, that not only there's some concern about, about even reducing the existing privilege tax, and that is a major concern to me.
Well, there was never any discussion about reducing the existing privilege tax. The reason, frankly, it was an issue that you brought up in discussions that you and I had, is I discussed with Mr. Suskey about the retroactivity concern that you expressed to me, and I indicated to him that I wanted the legislation to reflect a, the ability for this council to set it, and that the retroactivity would not be an issue, and this is his recommendation.
Okay. What if we don't set one at the first meeting in February?
If we don't set one at the first meeting in February, then by this legislation, there is none there.
What happens to the existing law that we have out here now?
Well, I think, Mr. Suskey.
Yeah, it's been repealed. There is, if this is adopted, the way Mayor Hayes proposed this amendment.
No, I'm talking about the, if we're repealing this, what happens to the one we have in effect right now?
It's not in existence.
But we have, as of right now, we've, this would repeal all privilege taxes in the city.
Yeah, because you have not adopted one for 2003.
True.
So, what it does.
Even the one we had for 2002 has gone.
That's correct, the way it's drafted.
That may be good. See what I'm saying?
We can amend the budget, take the raises up.
You got to take 440, you got to take 400 something, you got 607 out of the budget.
We can't get 100,000 to the jail then.
We just, I mean, there's something wrong with this, and, I mean, if we've taken out, we've got a line item in the budget.
All right, what I'm doing, Alderman Gibson, is, you know, is, first of all, you know, I'm still recommending it. I have, I have every confidence that the chamber and the city and/or this council will come up with a fee structure by the first meeting in February. But, you know, if that concern is yours, and Mr. Suskey can address it, then I'm happy to do that.
Come here.
Alderman Dobbins?
Could I make a, I don't know, I guess make this in form of amendment, that if we, if there's no, where are we at? On Section 1, uh, the city council at the first meeting in February, could we add a line that says that privilege license revert back to the 2002 effectiveness if no new privilege license fee structure is adopted in that meeting, in first meeting in February 2003? Come to that effect? So, that way, we have some safety.
Mr. Hurlacher's here from the chamber, he can address this.
Well, I don't know if this is a problem Mr. Hurlacher really needs to address. I'm sure he can. I think this is more of us trying to deal with finding a legislating way to resolve, you know, some of the issues that have been brought forward, and, you know, Mr. City Attorney Alderman Dobbins has made a suggestion. What's your thought of that suggestion?
Yes, I think we could probably add a sentence to the end of Section 3, Section 1, excuse me, and this is to the amended version, not the version actually.
Right, the amended version is now, yeah, the amended version.
Okay. Essentially put in there that if no privilege license fee, fee schedule is adopted by the first meeting in February, the 2002 privilege license fees shall be the set fees for 2003.
I make that form of motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Uh, one issue that I need to bring up, and that is if it's adopted, and there takes six votes for an emergency clause, you know, you got a little bit of a, you know, even though it might be adopted, revised, might be adopted, if there are not six votes there, then it could be a certain period of time before that would go into effect.
It would be 30 days before it goes into effect.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, 30 days, 60 days, excuse me.
60 days.
All right, on the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
All right, now, does it need to be read again?
Yes, sir. It's been read one time.
We're off the amendment, now we're back on the main one. May I ask a question also?
Sure.
What does this do to the, what does all of these amendments do to the over 65 that's in the present ordinance?
Mayor Hayes wanted me to exclude that, so in other words, if you're over 65, if this passes, you will still, you will be required to give a privilege license.
Okay, now, when we revert to the 2002 schedule, we also need to also, I know it's a separate item in that ordinance, we need to make sure that if we have to revert to 2002 schedule for some reason, that the over 65 still have to pay the tax.
Yeah, it is, because actually, that was not part of the schedule, that was a different amendment, and we did not amend that version.
All right, are we ready to read it again? Where are we?
It's been read one time.
All right, do I have a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading?
That's already, that's already happened.
Okay. What's the next thing we're supposed to do?
Move suspend the rules, place it up, place it up, third reading as.
No, no, no. It needs to be read the second time.
All right, let's read it the second time.
This is an ordinance, amended ordinance number 7502, also known as the occupation privilege tax ordinance, and amend a certain section in chapter 98 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code. Second reading is amended.
Now, we need a motion.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion to suspend the rule.
Motion to suspend the rules, place it on its third rule.
Third reading as amended.
As amended, all right. All right. That motion is made by Alderman Yielding, and seconded by Alderman Height.
Okay.
Look at you.
On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
This is an, this is an ordinance, amended ordinance number 7502, also known as occupation privilege tax ordinance, and amend a certain section in chapter 98 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code. Third and final reading is amended.
On the question.
Gibson?
Mayor.
Gibson?
Gibson passed.
Okay. Yielding?
I passed.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Do you want to address the resolution now?
Let's try the resolution.
A resolution expressing the city council's intent to adopt a fee schedule for privilege licenses for 2003 calendar year by the first meeting in February.
Second. Moving for a voice vote for adoption. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Do you want to address the resolution now?
Let's try the resolution.
A resolution expressing the city council's concerns about the governor appointing an attorney to a North Little Rock District Court judgeship who may not reside in North Little Rock as required by Article 19, Section 3, and Amendment 80 of the state constitution, directing the mayor to express said concerns to the governor, directing the city attorney to review legal issues accompanying said appointment.
Let me, let me just mention this, and first of all, you know, I want to acknowledge, you know, in the past, this administration's, during the tenure of Governor Huckabee, the good working relationship that we've had. I know that on issues like, you know, the boat launching ramp with the Game and Fish Commission, also the finalization of all Tell Arena and other things, we've enjoyed a good working relationship with the governor's office, and certainly this city has reciprocated in some instances. If you recall recently, you know, we partnered with the city of Little Rock in providing necessary water construction infrastructure for the, you know, for the new hall that's being built in the back of the state governor's mansion, and I think that was well and good that we are part of that economic development issue, as well as, you know, for the benefit of the state. You know, I think we all know that our current municipal judge, Barry Sims, was successful in his election, and as such, will be vacating, you know, the traffic division of our municipal judgeship the first of the year, and will be sworn in shortly after that. You know, during this time, we also recognize that Amendment 80 is causing some transitional aspects of the municipal court, and how important the municipal courts are to this city. I know that I never had any contact with the governor, nor expressed any direction that I suggested to him that he might take with regard to any person of this city, but I would have to admit that I've made an assumption that somebody familiar with the jurisdiction of this city, its streets, its traffic flows, its patterns, its community, its people, would more than likely, because of the qualified attorneys that we have in this city, be his field of selection. And last Friday, I learned that that wasn't the case. I was disappointed in that, I was concerned about the nominee, not having known that person. I have the chance to meet him today, you know, he appears to be a fine lawyer and have to me today that he has an apartment here in North Little Rock. I'm not sure beyond that, other than him expressing the fact that he's a resident, that, you know, that he does meet the requirements. And while I certainly feel a great deal of, of, we'll say cooperative spirit with Governor Huckabee's administration, you know, this is one instance where I feel like he perhaps went outside the, the field of choice, and, and I know I've had the chance to visit with several council members who have also voiced their concern, and, and to me, this is, is something that, that I know that if, if this hadn't been brought forward by this mayor, some likelihood it would have been brought forward otherwise. And, and I think this is the most sensible way to, to deal with this, and, and as a result, I would propose this motion, and it simply indicates that we are expressing our concern for the selection of that appointee and appearing that that's not, that person has not been familiar with this community, and secondly, to make sure that the proper bases have been touched. And, and I would firmly believe that, that with regard to my discussions with the city attorney, that, you know, that this person, if they haven't been a resident of this city, could elect to do so and to occupy an apartment and live here and, and fulfill the obligations required by the law. But I think we owe it to our citizens that if, if this person goes forward, and I would anticipate that he very might likely would, that those issues be resolved and certainly be made known to this community. With that, I'll open the floor for discussion, but I would ask for a motion for a voice vote on that so we could discuss this.
I'll make a motion, and I'd like to speak, please.
All right, motion made and seconded. Alderman Witcher.
Okay, you gave the complete, I guess, a polite rendition of the way I feel, so now I'm going to say what I've got to say. You know, I think at the very best, this is probably carpetbagger government. And that's, and that's, my wife warned me against using some adjectives tonight. I guess I probably, Friday, I've never been so disappointed in my life in our governor and his staff. If, if they followed, you know, while they might have technically followed the law, they did not follow, in my opinion, as layman, the spirit of the law. You know, they took someone who was an employee in Saline County, who lives in Little Rock, still resides in Little Rock, still has Little Rock telephone number, still has utilities in Little Rock, and the day before he was appointed, he rented an apartment in North Little Rock. That is not the spirit of the law, you know, in, in my opinion. I, I would hope, you know, while the resolution is nice, and while, you know, I know the mayor's going to write that letter, I would hope that we would do something more than this. If there is some way to block this man's confirmation, or if there's something else we could do, you know, I want to pursue that to the fullest extent. You know, this is not right. As the mayor said, you know, we, we have competent attorneys in North Little Rock, people who live here, who have been lifelong residents, who would, would be great judges. On that list of people that the mayor was, that the governor was considering, there were three other people besides this man, they were all Little Rock attorneys, all well-qualified folks, all great folks, and I could vouch for any of those three folks. Don't know this guy, I mean, he, and more than likely, he probably is really a great guy. But, you know, he's, he's a victim of, his boss lost her, her election in Saline County. She was a Republican. Well, that, that should tell you something in itself, and her husband is a lifelong friend, I'm assuming, and a staff member of the governor's, and that's how he got the appointment. Not by, by being familiar with our judicial system, not by being a resident of North Little Rock, but simply by sheer payoff for politics, and that's exactly what I'm going to call it. And I think probably I should stop there. I'm getting mad.
You won't get any suffering you get home.
Yeah, well, because I, I didn't, I didn't go that extra length. So I guess the question I would like, Mayor, to ask Mr. Suskey is, you know, if, if you have, if and when you have the opportunity to research this appointment and the criteria of this appointment, you know, if there is in fact any legal action that we might be able to take regarding the judge's appointment.
Yeah, I'll take a look at what some of the options are. Obviously, any citizen individually, I think, could make a challenge to this. Some of the concerns I've had brought to me is if in fact merely renting an apartment the day of your appointment would constitute residencies, you know, a fact to be determined, but if a court were to say it's not a valid import appointment, I've already had at least two defense attorneys saying that they may challenge any conviction, which could pose a problem. And then there's the always fear of an illegal exaction lawsuit where somebody could contest, you know, any actions of this city. For instance, anytime you have a position that's not lawful, I'm not saying this isn't, but if a court found it's not lawful, we could be subject to a lawsuit to have to refund that money. So those are some of the issues I'll take a look at, and, and I'll make, get my issues together, do my research, and make advice to y'all in the future.
And I guess, one other thing, I, I think it's, it's a sham, Mayor, that the governor didn't pick up the phone at least to inform you or visit with you about this. It's, that's about as discourteous as I've ever seen him act, you know, and it's, you know, he's, I'm going to stop.
Alderman Thomas.
Is Mr. Standards here by chance? See you by chance tonight?
Here.
He's not here.
I didn't see him. I met him today.
I, I met him today, too, like I said. I don't see him in the audience. I, I did not invite him, but I didn't disinvite him either. I told him that, that we would be discussing this. I indicated to him that, you know, that there was some concern that I had heard from the council and certainly from myself also, and that, that it wasn't directed toward him as an individual nor his legal abilities. It simply had to deal with the fact that we didn't know him.
Your turn. But the governors always have that privilege of making an appointment, do they not?
In this instance, it appears to be the case. There is a residency requirement, that the person be a resident of this community, and that is a fact decision, but at least it appears, and this is just a little bit of my lawyer talking, it appears that to the extent that is a requirement, it, it's not a, a, you don't have to be a resident for a month or six months, or, you know, there may be an issue with regard to being elector and how long it takes to qualify as that, but whatever is out there, at least from my discussion with the city attorney as well as a little bit that I know, and that is whatever fallacies that may be there can indeed be cured by, by factual and legitimate residency. Just a second. You finished? Alderman Hite?
Well, two things. One is, if he established residency the day he was appointed, I mean, I look at that as being an ethics issue more than a legal issue, and, and, but aren't judges supposed to be held to the highest ethical standards and so forth?
Thanks, Sean.
The second thing, the second thing I question is that the city of North Little Rock totally funds this position, correct? Is Amendment eighty going to change there?
Uh, the general assembly will decide that most, in all, about all likelihood this session. So currently, you know, at least for this budget year, I imagine this North Rock will, but under Amendment eighty, the general assembly will decide if this position exists in 2005, and they will most likely decide its funding source.
Amendment eighty, excuse me, Alderman Hite, Amendment eighty, if I'm not mistaken, indicates that the effectiveness of it will be 2005. So this, this, the term of this individual under the constitution, or this term, will be for two years, and the person that appointed to it cannot run for reelection. So to, to the extent that we're dealing with this issue, this issue is under the transitional law that is currently, as it exists, and that means that it's our funding and our, and our financial responsibility.
Through 2004?
Correct.
Okay. Not through two, no.
Change to 2004.
Yeah, right.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a motion and second on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
No.
Dobbin.
Yes.
Thomas.
No.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
All right, let's go back to the, I think, let's see, are we?
That was all of the communications.
That's all the communication. Let's go to old, old business.
What about the public hearings?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. We do have a few public hearings. First one is on the budget. Let's just start on that one. Anybody here wants to comment on the 2003 budget? This public hearing's open. Nelson, state your full name and comments, floor jurors.
Nelson A. Watson, senior. What I rose to talk about is the budget from a standpoint of including some things, or one issue that is becoming a major concern, and should be a major concern for the city of North Little Rock, and that is the West Nile virus and control measures four. Herefore, the Redwood Tunnel has been considered a condition that the residents of North Little Rock have had to put up with, and any improvements would have been considered from any standpoint, like when monies were allocated for our particular ward would have to come out of that. But since the Redwood Tunnel is really a larger problem than just our community or ward two, and it's been a larger problem, because it's a major tributary that drains water throughout North Little Rock, everybody from Tyson benefits from it because their wastewater goes through it as well. We're talking, talking East Gate and all the other communities, there are some drainage that goes through that area. Now we have a problem now that we definitely cannot ignore, because birds that get contaminated, the mosquitoes from stagnant water, they do not stay put. They migrate, they go everywhere, and they could affect the entire community. What we've done is we've recommended some short-term and long-term goals for improving the condition of the Redwood Tunnel. From a standpoint, and I have some photographs that I took of the Redwood Tunnel that I'd like to just pass around for you to just look at, and let you see the conditions that exist in the Redwood Tunnel, especially during the times of, of midsummer when the water flow is very low. During that period of time, all of the, the particular trash and things that are in the ditch impede the flow of water, and then you end up with stagnation, and then that's when you really have mosquito infestation in the ditch. If you look at those photographs, and you can just pass them around, you'll see blockage, you'll see periods of time when water doesn't flow at all through the ditch. During those times is when the mosquito infestations are at their highs. Since our community is adjacent to it, we have an immediate concern, and herefore, the ditch has been kind of ignored from a standpoint of a maintenance issue. And what we have is some recommendations, short-term, one of them is to implement an immediate plan to address restricted water flow, especially stagnation, stagnation during the dry periods when water volumes are at their lowest level, to remove all debris, trash from the waterways, shorelines. It, it, it's horrible if you really want to, want to put it into a term. Also, spray and apply appropriate chemicals in the ditch to kill adult mosquitoes, especially when the water's low. Monitor the conditions to ensure that the mosquito habitats are eliminated or greatly reduced. I know the state has some money, and they, they allocated some, some limited funds to be divided by the particular counties, but that amount of money just want to address our problem. Long-term, which is to develop an annual maintenance plan to improve the maintenance and efficiencies of the Redwood Tunnel ditch, especially open section. From the red, the beginning of the Redwood Tunnel all the way around the perimeter of Dixie Edition is about 2.7 miles of open ditch, and that whole open ditch is contaminated with everything from old Democrat paper boxes to, at least, at one time, Captain O'Keefe, one of your officers stopped on the ditch to destroy something they thought was a snake. It was one of those long, round, filled, fabric-filled things that's used for absorbing waste. It's long, and it's elongated, and it looks like a snake, and it was wrapped around a, and it's in one of those photographs, it's wrapped around a, a, a branch that was laying in the ditch, and they thought it was a snake, and I informed them that it was a piece of contaminated absorbent material. It's just, and I invite anybody that wants to come and peruse that ditch and drive along, that you'll see it is erosion, there's a lot of erosion going on. We need regular trash picks up, pickups along the shoreline and waterways. We need inspections of the shoreline for erosion and flow efficiency determinations, because right now, if you look at it, the major part of the ditch has caved in, and we have a great amount of restricted flow in that ditch. Implement measures to reduce that erosion and the narrowing of the beta rightways, especially Douglas Avenue. Douglas Avenue has narrowed considerably, it's almost to the point where you cannot get two cars pass it safely because of the erosion. And to use the herbicides, and then finally establish an aggressive research team to develop and solicit funds from local, from the local city, state, and federal governments to renovate the Redwood Tunnel and implement drastic measures to improve its conditions and efficiencies. We had a great opportunity when President Clinton was in office, and everybody made some great accolades about what they were going to do and how it was going to be done. We had meetings in Dixie at Conley Park, we had legislators there, legislators there, and everybody came, and they said that we got this great opportunity. He was in office for eight years, if I'm not, if I'm correct, and we did not capitalize on it. The federal funds that were supposed to come down and renovate the Redwood Tunnel and improve the tunnel and all of that never happened. And one reason I think it didn't happen, because we didn't have aggressive team together that kept that issue in the forefront of the people that could make the difference. But right now, with the Red, with the West Nile issues becoming so apparent, and, and I was in Milwaukee and in Chicago area this summer, and each one of those areas were reporting numbers of elderly and young people that were infected by the West Nile, and they had several deaths in Milwaukee and Chicago, and we're going to have them here if we do not control those types of conditions in our city. So I'm asking the council and this body to really look at this issue, because I'm looking around. Now, this is a very young man here, but for the most part, we fall in that category of the at-risk group for the West Nile. Most of us in this council fall in that, or getting close to that at-risk group, and there's no way we can continue to ignore this because the numbers are going to go up. Thank you very much.
Let me, I want to ask, you, you're, what you're really wanting us to do is to place someplace in our budget to take care of this now.
Right, right. I need, I need some, we would like to see some funding allocated for this. I read in the newspaper that our able-bodied financial director said we had two million that's not even allocated for anything. It was in the paper. I read it. I still got the copy.
That's the general fund, I think.
Right, and we're saying that we think some money needs to come out of the general fund, not just the money that we divide up for the wards, because this is an issue bigger than just our ward. This is an issue that would benefit the entire city of North Little Rock.
Well, let me, let me just address a little bit of that, Nelson. First of all, the, you know, there has been some very strong movement with regard to the Redwood Tunnel and, and to the ditch. You know, we spent, I forgot, matching money of several hundred thousand dollars to go with some similar, well, I think three times that amount from the Corps of Engineers are currently developing plans. In other words, this has, this drainage project, in order for us to get federal money, has to be approved and, 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 we'll say, licensed by the Corps of Engineers, and they have to have a certain ratio as benefit versus expenditure. And that process has, has been going on for about three years now, maybe four, and, and I am hopeful, you know, that when they finish their drawings, and we set aside, how much is currently set aside for the Redwood, how much, five hundred thousand is currently set aside, you know, for that project to match Corps funding, and I think we've already spent a couple hundred thousand. So, so in large measure, some of what you're talking about has been addressed and is being addressed vis-à-vis our working with the Corps in terms of coming up with a long-term plan that would, that would take a congressional enactment. We have had a line item, Senator Hutchinson was, was working with Senator Lincoln in acquiring that. In fact, he was out at, at the, at Conley Park.
Right.
And, and made that announcement. You know, the thing is, is that, you know, that there has been progress made. These things aren't fast. As you may well know, or maybe, maybe you're not aware, but, but this project in terms of the Redwood Tunnel and, and our colodrains has been going on, you know, for forty, fifty years in terms of trying to find some answer. That tunnel, and I know at least in the fourteen years that I've been here, the first thing that Mr. Robulesky and, and Mr. Blodgett told me was that that thing along with some engineers was that it's subject to collapse any time now, and, and that was fourteen years ago. So rest assured, we've been working on that part of it. Now, when it comes to, you know, the short-term problems that, that you listed in your goals, the West Nile wasn't around fourteen years ago, and, and that certainly brings an increased urgency to deal with health problems. You know, Ms. Carla Grayson, budget to deal with this. Now, in terms of cleaning up that, you know, then Mr. Ward, there's allocation of resources, you know, that can be done in terms of that. So, you know, there are answers to your questions and some of the things that you've raised. And I would agree with you, you know, that because of the West Nile concern, you know, that this is more of a priority perhaps than obviously it's been in the past. And I know I've had a chance to, and sometimes, to work on closure of portion of those ditches. This has been a long time ago, but the community of Dixie voted not to close or to cover a good section of that ditch in the early part of it. And that was a choice that I went along with, but that was a vote that was taken by the community out there that they didn't want that ditch closed, there was a feeling that it would cause increased flooding.
Of course, Mr. Mayor, we can't even get the money to do the tunnel there now without taking it farther. We'd never be able to do that. What I hope we could do is put some figure in here that we could rely on to help do some work out there even next year in that temporary solution area is what I'd like to do.
Well, I mean, obviously the council can do what they want to with their budgets. You know, you certainly have, Mr. Watson, my commitment to allocate resources to address some of your points and to work with you in doing that, whether or not the council amends the budget and specifies as an item or not, but you certainly have my commitment to work on addressing some of these points and we'll be happy to work with you regardless of the council's action.
Appreciate your consideration and would like to be an instrumental part of it.
I got one other thing. Mr. Watson, Mayor stated some time ago about there was a move to cover that particular ditches. You think the pulse has changed, changed a little bit? You're more inclined with West Nile, I'm even more in favor of having it covered rather than just remain open even when it's in the design of it. The Army Corps of Engineers in design, there's a couple of designs that's gonna float out there in the coming year, and one of them should show a covered ditch. And I was just wondering what's your take on that now? Even with West Nile, I can see it as we must cover it, but I want to just hear from you.
Well, I would like to address that I was a proponent of closing. I think there was more of a, I guess I could say, not a majority that wanted it not to be closed, but it was a particular entity that had a larger, more resounding voice that was heard was the reason why that issue didn't. But if you notice that the Dixie lane, that main avenue used to have a ditch that ran along it, it runs east and west. It was closed, the community likes the appearance and they like the way it looks with no consequences of flow impediment at all. So I think the climate has changed and I think the people will be more inclined for closure of as much of that ditch as you can do.
That's great. I guess the only thing, before you stop though, it's like you said, it's, I think, maybe over a mile long, the area there.
It's more than a mile, it's two point, I measured it, it's about 2.7 miles of open ditch, starting at what we used to call the old Redwood School and go all the way back around to the east side tributary up to the railroad, it's about 2.7 miles of open ditch. That's just including what borders Dixie. That's not including what goes, what runs north to the railroad.
That has nothing to do with it. That dates along Douglas, you see?
Right.
There's a lot of open area in there that's.
Well, that's what I'm including, starting there all the way around, that runs east and west all the way to the south part of the direction.
Then are you satisfied then in working with the mayor, leave the budget as and then let him work with you during the summer to get that done?
Well, if we wait till the summer, that's too late.
Yeah, we want to get started on this as soon as we can get the wet season past, is what I'd hope.
We may look at something in the budget tonight.
Yeah. If it doesn't get put in the budget, it won't get done.
Well, I'll disagree with that, but the council certainly has the opportunity to.
That's the way it usually does at our house. If it don't get in the budget, it don't get.
Well, it's in the budget.
But thank you very much. But I do want to say one other secondary thing that I do, I am 53 now and I have lived in Dixie for, I mean Dixie and North Rock for the majority of my life. I remember back in the times when Dixie had promises of things and we finally began to move into the 21st, 22nd century of capital improvements in Dixie. The 11th Street project was a great improvement to Dixie, it's beginning to move Dixie into almost a, I guess you could say, 75% compliance with capital improvement issues. We still have about three more numbered streets that, and when we finish those, I think at that point, capital improvements would have been completed in Dixie by then. So we appreciate you for that. It's a great-looking project, there's still some little minor issues that need to be resolved, but it's a great-looking project, it's making the community look very nice and curb appeal. So we appreciate you for that and we'd like to see our community stay on the agenda to try to finish the remaining streets as well. Thank you very much.
Microphone's still open? Going once, going twice, I'm adjourning this public hearing and I'd like to ask the council if they don't have an objection to go ahead and call 0293, which is the budget, and let's just go ahead and deal with that. Ms. Marshall?
This is an ordinance adopted in the budget for the 2003 fiscal year for the city of North Rock, first reading.
Can I go ahead and take it to the third reading? I think, did it say first reading?
First.
Actually, the second reading.
No, it's just, we've read it, this is the third reading. We've read it twice. So this is the third reading. Now, it's open, do I have a motion seconded for adoption and then we'll put it on the floor for amendment?
Okay.
There a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, now the floor is open. Alderman Dobbins?
Mayor, going to special appropriations, Exhibit B under, it's 5326, CADA capital improvement. Basically, with the situation with CADA, I guess this sort of depends on what happens to our neighbors to the south with some of their funding. But if there's no funding given from our neighbors to the south, then I think that we may need to look at this particular line item, 5326, CADA capital improvement, and perhaps kind of move it in for, to increase our larbside programs, our health department. That's one suggestion of finding that money that we need to make sure that we take care of some of the issues out there in Dixie.
Any other comments? On the motion?
Gibson? Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
We have an emergency clause?
Yes.
I believe we do, okay. Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Just for information, I will have a suggested amendment to you on detail on an opportunity. Obviously, we passed a budget that has $200,000 more revenue in it than we're gonna have, at least $200,000 more revenue. And so with that in mind, we've, hopefully we're gonna have that $200,000, but this is the first time in my 20 years that we've ever passed a budget where we had revenue in it that we knew at the time we passed it, we didn't know what we were gonna have or not. And that's the $200,000 from the general privilege taxes.
Right.
Is in this budget. And so we need to address that. But I want to address one other small item while we're at it, and this is a budget item. If you'll look that we're budgeting our, and don't go to your numbers, but it's costing us between $800 and $1 million to run our 911 system. The fees were established several years ago and at the same time, we were locked into a 5% of the base telephone bill as a way to fund it. Well, over the past five or six or seven years, your base telephone bill has actually gone down, or stayed even, while our cost of running this department has gone from the $400,000 and change to somewhere, it's very difficult to get a handle on how much that department costs because it's not, you can't just look at 911 emergency services, you also gotta pull the same people who are in the police department budget and the people in the fire department's budget because they run that center and put it into there. And obviously, we've gotta find a way to fund that, or the, if it's gone doubled in five or six years, what's it gonna do in the next five or six years? So that one we need to look at, and there's a couple other items I'll bring your attention to on the budget.
Thank you, Alderman. And I recognize that and I can assure the council that if we don't adopt a privilege tax ordinance that provides for that revenue, at the same time, you know, there'll be recommendations to cut the budget to meet the revenue projections.
And to cut something out of the budget?
Absolutely. I mean, that's the only way to do it.
Out of the general fund side, because it can't come out of capital side.
That's right.
Okay.
Absolutely. Any further questions?
Just a question, which court is seconded?
Second.
Right now, in speaking of, a little bit of, well, let's do the public hearing on the land use.
Okay. You know, Mayor, we passed the budget before we passed R-02192, which is reallocating the money within the street, within the parks department.
We did that, you know, we did that. Your point is well-taken, so we need to, I tell you what, Robert, just sit down because we need to address that, because if that doesn't, if that doesn't, if that's not successful, then we have to go back to the motions. So, you know, good point, Alderman. Can we call that item a resolution?
A resolution stating the city council's support for changing the distribution of the 1-cent hamburger tax used for capital improvements.
Move for adoption.
Motion made, and seconded. We have an amendment, and the amendment, you know, I asked the city attorney to draft, it basically restates what was the original intent of the city council when we adopted this, and that was that when the capital portion is satisfied, that that portion of the tax drop off unless there's different action taken by the city council. So in other words, you know, what we do now will essentially redo what we did before and that provides, again, I'll be repetitive, that when the capital portion is satisfied, and Mr. Sisson indicates that by this reallocation, it would be within the next several additional months, so it's not a prolonged period of time, that the portion that was directed toward capital will then be dropped off unless there's different action taken by this council. Would you, do you have that amendment, Mr. City Attorney?
It's been passed.
Yes, I passed it out there.
On the table, but what is that percentage, Mayor? Is it's gonna be a percentage amount because we, if we're gonna, does this mean that we would, we would reduce the hamburger tax from 3% to?
2.6% or 2.4%. Wait a minute, it, right now, we take, we take, it's one penny and of that one penny, 75% is presently is going toward capital and 25% is going toward operation. With council's action, that means that 40% would go to operations and 60% would go to capital, so that means that 60% would drop off after the paying of the capital without further action by the council.
Was this in the ordinance, the original ordinance?
I understand it was.
Yes, it was.
My recollection going in, looking through it, that it wasn't spelled out, that they adopted it and that it, this is just how you allocated it in the budget, it was not part of the living ordinance.
The only thing I want to caution us, I don't want us to get in the same situation the county is. We're sitting there taking this year and putting how much additional money into the parks to run it for maintenance and operation and another piece of legislation. This year, we'll put $250,000 in, we amended budget, is this council? Tonight, we're putting 250, so we're gonna do the same thing that the county's done with the jail, that we're not extremely careful. And that is the fact that we built soccer fields and we built, we're continuing to build these facilities, we're not putting any more money in to run them with. And if that's not in the original ordinance, I'd like for it not to be in this, in this resolution.
Well, I mean, the simplest way is not to adopt, you know, the amendment.
That's.
You know, I, I mean, I, again, take the position that this council has the authority to change it and I still support the amendment, you know, but that's up to this council.
And it, so you're waiting, so I'm not making a motion to substitute?
I mean, what's on the floor is what's on the floor. There's no motion.
I move a job, move for adoption, R-02192.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I just have one question. Someone mentioned, you've mentioned that this reduces the hamburger tax?
If we pass the amendment, we reduce the hamburger tax and reduce the operation and maintenance money that the parks department would have when the bonds are paid off.
But we're not doing that. If, let me just, if the amendment was moved and adopted, you know, the policy now that we're recommending is the changing of 75 to 60% and a 60-40 split with 60% going toward debt service, no, 75, yeah, 60% going toward debt service with 40% going to operations. What the amendment would do is essentially automatically indicate that the capital portion would be, would be reduced, with the hamburger taxes directed toward capital portion would be reduced when the capital portion was paid off without any further action by the council. That's what the amendment would do. What Alderman Gibson and what's on the floor does not take that into consideration. So the council has the opportunity to move the amendment or to act as now, which is a motion made and seconded for the adoption. Alderman Dobbins?
Well, we're on the legislation without the amendment, but.
No, amendment's not on the table.
Amendment's not on the table. Well, the advantage though of going with the amendment would be a reduction of taxes to the, to our hamburger tax.
Without any further action by the council, that's the effect of the amendment. That's not to say that the council couldn't come in and do what we did or what we were perhaps gonna do this time, and that is come in with legislation that would alter that.
I want to make a, make a motion that we add the amendment to this legislation.
Motion made and seconded. There's a motion for the amendment, is there a second? Motion made and seconded to adopt the legislation. There's no one that has moved to the, moved the amendment, to consider the amendment. That's a proper motion.
I'll second it.
All right, motion made and seconded. We're discussing on the amendment. Alderman, Mitch Witcher and then Alderman Bestel.
All right, Mr. Dobbins, if you'll recall.
I can't hardly hear you.
Okay. Our priority coming on the council, you know, under the state AMP laws, the state, the AMP commission make, made a recommendation to the council and the council adopted that recommendation, adding the additional one cents, one cent now. And I thought it was in the legislation, but apparently it's not. You know, our agreement at the time was that we would take a certain percentage for operation and a certain percentage for capital and we would issue bonds, I think over a five-year period, isn't that right, Mr. Gibson? Isn't that what we did? Okay. And then when those bonds would be, would be paid off, then we would drop that portion attributed to the bonds, bonds. And that's, that's what we agreed to do, that's what we said we were gonna do, and I think that's what we should do.
Let's get exactly what it says because it does, it's very clear what it says. The ordinance it says, says nothing about a 75-25 split. That was passed on the 14th of December of 98. Two weeks later, on December the 28th, 98, we said that, that the one quarter, one quarter cent of the prepared, of the prepared food tax would stay on and three quarters would go off. So that means the tax is gonna drop back down to 2.25 instead of 2.4 if we follow the R-98170 that we did in 1998. It's very, the ordinance that passed, the ordinance that passed the extra penny tax did not say anything about a split. It was two weeks later that we indicated what the split was gonna be. And so what happens is that.
I thought it was late.
By resolution.
By resolution. You got an ordinance that did one and a resolution that did the other. Now, the situation that happens is that it says in this intent, how we're gonna Now, the situation that happens is that it says in this intent, how we're gonna spend it, we're gonna change that intent with this. Now, which I'm sure we can do, and we've got to find some way to do it, we're gonna rearrange the budget again, because we've got to take care of some money that's not gonna be able, not be available to the parks department. So we have two choices, as I see it, is if we pass the amendment, it takes care of this year, but it doesn't take care of the long-range problem if we do what we said we were gonna do in the long-range problem. And that long range said we would spend it seventy-five, twenty-five, and that was passed two weeks after the front, the first one. And these are available to be passed around there, here, but Paul can, but perhaps what we need to do, I don't know what we need to do, maybe we need to keep it on the seventy-five, twenty-five, and then come back with some other way to fund the electric parks department, or to reenact that tax at the end of the term if we choose to. Probably was passed in ninety-nine, it's a five-year bond issue, but it's gonna pay off early.
Well, we didn't borrow the money until last year, the.
We, if you remember, Alderman, what we tried to do was reduce the interest payments, and so we essentially borrowed the money from the park, I mean, from the electric department. So we didn't borrow the money until we absolutely had to, and that was what, last year or year before?
Last year, in two thousand and one.
When we get through, well, we have spent five million dollars in improvements, capital improvements for the parks.
Under the, under the new, the six percent, we were collecting up money by the middle of two thousand and five, the seventh month of two thousand and five in our projections.
Okay, so.
We changed it to the sixty-forty, to pay off the electric, the bonds, and do all the construction. If we leave it to sixty percent early in two thousand and five, about February or March, we will collect enough, so this whole change will only take about five months of how we collect it.
So even our first one is a change in the policy that we adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, when we passed the tax. Even the original resolution changes the method.
It, yeah, it real allocates the seventy-five, twenty-five to sixty-forty, which is what it would take to balance, from an operational standpoint, to balance the budgets of the parks. And it appears to me that, you know, that the resolution is the proper way to, as you have pointed out, to reallocate those, those funds.
Do we, are we reallocating both funds, sir?
I'm not following.
One of them is reallocating it for the budget, and the other one is reallocating it for when the bonds are paid off. Do we, does the tax go down to two point two-five percent, or does it goes to two point four percent?
The only, Mr. City Attorney, you know, you're the one that drafted this stuff, so you can help us answer that question. I'm not sitting here reading what you said.
Okay. When we, when the city council levied the ordinance, it said, levied the one penny hamburger tax, period, end of story, they levied it. Came back and said by non-binding resolution, similar to the resolution that would use capital.
What do you mean, non-binding?
Well, a resolution saying this isn't the intent of the council, how to use it, how the council.
Not binding, is it?
No, how it uses it is when you adopt your budget every year. And so every year when the council adopts the budget, it was divided seventy-five, twenty-five. And so at this point, you're at the decision if you adopt a budget contrary to the resolution, I mean, the budget's what stands. So the city council adopted an ordinance levying the tax, and then my resolution said this is our intent to use it. And then now, you know, four years down the road, city council's here, and they have faced with the decision if they want to change that.
What's your, what's your recommendation on the action that we need to take?
I think the action you've already taken when you adopted the budget, you can't adopt the resolution stating it's your intent to change that, which you've already done when you adopted the ordinance.
Well, what's the amendment gonna do then?
The amendment restates that what the council plans to do is at the end of that time, that the portion of the tax will go off. Even if you state this in your resolution, you still have to come back at that point in time and adopt an ordinance to repeal it. So you can state the intent all you want, you still gotta adopt the ordinance to do that.
What we have before us right now is the resolution that, you know, listening to what the city attorney says, you know, at least my, my, the steps that I would intend for us to take is exactly what we have before us, and that's the resolution with the proposed amendment.
And that's on the table, man.
That's on the table. Any discussion?
What's on the table is the amendment.
I needed to ask Mr. Sisson a question, if he could, he feels, he deals with these fears every day, what is your recommendation? Alderman, we'll enforce whatever this council. I know, but, but you have an idea, I think, you have an idea, what would you recommend? I mean, to tell you, Alderman, we will collect enough money, I mean, the bonds are not completely paid off until two thousand and six. We're gonna collect enough money sometime in two thousand and five to pay it off.
Whether it be seventy-five, twenty-five, or sixty-four.
Right. So whichever way, we'll have enough funds. So you're gonna be satisfied whichever way you go? I will be happy, we'll enforce whichever one y'all pass.
All right. All right, we have the amendment before the council, discussion on the amendment. On the motion, tell me, Alderman?
Does the amendment mean that we're gonna pay, gonna reduce the tax to two twenty-five or two forty?
Mr. City Attorney?
It doesn't specify, it just says upon the payment about sending, I mean, ultimately, this is stating your intent, it depends on what you do when you adopt the ordinance in two thousand and six.
But files on the motion, your motion to adopt is a principal motion, Ms. Whitby, if you call a row.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobbinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, now we've got CADA, let's go back to our public hearings. We'll do, Mr. Jones, you wanna come to the microphone?
Now, we skipped two others.
Well, I know, I'm just skipping around tonight.
That's fine, after Mr. Jones, I'd like to have a drink, for a bottle of water.
Mr. Jones, just basically introduce, you know, the, you know, the current status of your route structure, and particularly give emphasis to how it will affect North Little Rock transit riders going back and forth to the south side of the river.
Okay, Mayor, about four weeks ago, the city of Little Rock's first draft budget was about one point six million dollars short of what the CADA board said they needed to operate the service next year, and that would have caused, through the interlocal agreement that requires us to reduce service on a prorated amount, that would have caused a serious reduction in the number of routes and the number of buses in the city of Little Rock, and as you know, there's a regional travel on the bus system, it would have affected North Little Rock ridership for a great deal. However, since that, since November twenty-seventh, we've made progress in getting more money in the Little Rock budget. The CADA board has also expressed its intent to take some funds out of capital, both federal and state, and put them into operations for the year two thousand and three, so now our gap instead of one point six million is about half a million dollars. And at its meeting last Friday, the board decided to cut the River Market trolley, which operates in downtown Little Rock and was paid for by the city of Little Rock, and to reduce the hours of night service in Little Rock to where the last bus will be back in the garage around nine o'clock at night instead of around eleven o'clock at night now. Night service in North Little Rock still ends around seven o'clock at night, so the immediate impact is gonna be minimal on North Little Rock ridership. The fact that we're taking money out of capital and putting it in operation is gonna have some ripple effects if we don't replace that sometime the next year or two, because we need to match our federal money to honor our commitment to take care of the bus system, while we're building the streetcar line.
What is, what is the normal match on capital for CADA?
It's eighty-twenty, eighty percent federal, twenty percent local.
And do we leave money on the table every year?
The last, since we started the streetcar project, we started matching all the money. This will be the first year in about five years that we've not matched the roughly three million dollars that we get allocated in formula funds. So right now, we have, the only way we're gonna match any funds at all will be in the second half of the year, if the rent car fee program of the state of Arkansas continues past June thirtieth, we'll have about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which will match eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so we have around a million dollar capital program if the rent car fee, but we won't really be able to determine until legislature goes out.
And when it comes to, when it comes to your operational cost for the river rail system, approximately how much is that gonna be, both total, and I think we've agreed in previous representations by the various governments that we'll split that equally, can you give me an idea of when that's likely to be implemented and what that amount is?
We think that right now we'll be on target to start operating revenue service in the middle of two thousand and four, and the annual amount for full twelve months, we, the rough number right now is six hundred thousand dollars, could be a little more, could be a little less, depending how many hours we want to operate it. And the agreement that is non-binding, but the agreement that we have between Little Rock, North Little Rock, and Plasmin County is that you'll split that operating cost on a one-third basis, so it'll be two hundred thousand a year, but a hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and four. One impact I did not mention is related to the rail, we had asked for money to hire a rail manager at the end of two thousand and three, in November, December, so we'd have somebody as we get into the testing phase of the streetcar project onboard, but that, that request for a new staff person got eliminated along with a couple other staff positions we were looking for, so in two thousand and three, we, in two thousand and four, we'll be needing to hire a rail manager and get them onboard quickly so they can help do the training and all the work necessary to get us up and running.
Well, one of the things, and I'll ask you to comment on this, and then I'll, I'll from the floor, but I might even ask for perhaps a subsequent public hearing, you know, this, this community, and I think you and I have talked about this on two different occasions, by this council adopting its budget, although there was some discussion about the capital aspects of the hundred thousand that is in the budget, did respond, I believe, Mr. Sisson, and remind me, you know, that those numbers are in there, you requested an additional two hundred thousand from this community, if I'm not mistaken, and the approximate number.
For capital, yes, sir.
Excuse me?
For capital funds?
I thought for operations.
Oh, for operations, yeah, it was about that much of an increase, yes, sir.
And we put that amount in the budget in anticipation of others being like responsive, and I recognize Little Rock's problems, so I'm certainly not gonna get into that, but one of the things that I did ask you is assuming that Little Rock is not able to come up with, and I anticipate them, at least I've heard expressions, that they're gonna try to find additional funding to support transit now, whether that is accomplished or not, but assuming that they don't, then would you comment on whether or not you would be calling on us for any additional funds over and above what we contributed last year, or would there might in fact be a reduction? Or if there is additional revenue, then I might ask for suggestions, and also ask